Hot afternoon, welcome to everyone. I would like to call the June 23rd, 2025 Board of Trustees Regular Meeting to Order. The first line of business is 1B. And ask everybody to please take a moment to reflect in silence. With that, if we all could please stand. Mr. Hollings, if you could help us lead with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. First order of business on to item 1C is the adoption of the Agenda and Consent Agenda Items. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
I assume so.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, question. Go ahead.
Any opposed?
Me.
The ayes have it.
No, no, I have, you forgot the question.
I think the question should have been raised before I brought it to vote, but what's your question?
Okay, wait a minute, I'm just getting in. Ms. Chairman, I would like the board to look at item 11A. As I sign into board docs.
Yes, ma'am.
I think, let me make sure. Yeah, 11A, 11A only has one signature. And our board policy says in order to put something on the agenda for the cow, you need three signatures. And for the board, you need four signatures. I am not challenging the content of the item, I'm challenging the process.
Seeing as it's been voted on and the ayes have been in favor, it was seven to one.
No, no. That is not.
Mr. Parliamentarian, I think I called for a vote. I had all in favor of the ayes and one nay. I don't think, I don't think.
You went straight for the vote, you didn't ask a question.
Correct. You went directly for the vote and you did not ask for the question.
Okay, so I may have missed some of that dialogue. What, what exactly transpired again?
The question is that the motion on the agenda that was brought up at the agenda meeting had one signator on it in which it was discussed. And at the agenda meeting was Ms. McKenny and myself when that meeting came in, which is why we approved it to put on to the agenda as written, as adopted.
Just for clarification, so you did have three trustees, including chairman and the superintendent, who by policy can't have something on the agenda. You just didn't.
It was a written document.
You should have had the signatures on there.
Exactly.
But for FOIA purposes and for policy purposes, it was all done properly.
But we don't know that. We don't know that this was done properly.
But now you do.
Listen. I cannot, if I want something on the agenda, I have to put it on an agenda form. We do not make up policies as we go. Every agenda item should go on an agenda form. And that did not happen. So regardless, you do not, as a board, get to say that three people were in a meeting and the superintendent. We follow policy.
Ms. Roberson, I agree with you, but I do believe policy also states that the chairman alone can add something to the agenda.
The chairman did not ask.
Or even the superintendent. Do we have that policy handy?
And I think this all, I mean, if there's such an objection to the motion when we take this up for discussion, then we can move on.
I am following policy BEDA slash policy BEDE, the Board Agenda and Notice. It tells us the proper procedure for a board member to put something on the agenda. That's what I am challenging. A board member had something on the agenda and it did not follow the proper procedure. And what we are not going to do is circumvent policy because there's no need to have policy if we are going to interpret it in different ways.
That particular policy is correct, but I do believe it also states, blinking on the actual policy, that the chairman alone can actually, with the superintendent, put something on the agenda.
But the chairman didn't put this on. A trustee put this on.
He, I'm gonna let him speak for himself.
Chairman did not put this on, the originator is a trustee.
It was brought up at the agenda meeting.
We are not going to perfect policy when, the way we want to, so it could work for us, unless we should not have board policies.
A, a written form was submitted to the chair.
Then, then that form.
All FOIA requirements have been made, I mean, enabled.
To the agenda.
And does it have three signatures?
It had.
In addition to this signature.
It did at the meeting.
Then it's not attached to the agenda.
Well, can we, can it be provided to us, please?
Can you, yeah, if that form was provided, then.
Let's see it.
Ms. Higgins?
She's checking with your counsel.
Do you have the form?
If, I've seen the form, was it at the agenda meeting?
It was at the agenda meeting, right. And the agenda meeting was when it was discussed. So I'm trying to understand what is the issue here?
The issue is that if I want to put something on the agenda as a trustee for the board meeting, I, trustee Darlene Dunmire Roberson, will have to get three additional trustees to sign the form. I believe that it's only fair that another trustee should follow the same process and that we should not interpret policies to suit what we wanted to.
Ms. Roberson, I think, I know that your statement of policy is accurate, particularly in regards to the Board of Trustees Agenda. I believe the thinking around this item, which can certainly is at the purview of the board and/or counsel and the parliamentarian, is that a motion to reconsider or a motion to rescind takes one trustee who voted in the affirmative. And that I believe the thinking on this item, there is a form somewhere and you're exactly right, it should be loaded up in board docs and, and we will ensure that is corrected moving forward. But I think the thinking on this item was that it takes one person to bring a motion back up for either reconsideration.
Superintendent Huggins, I am not challenging the motion.
I understand.
I'm challenging the process.
I understand.
And I am not challenging the motion. A trustee do have the right to rescind their vote, but in order to have it on the agenda, it has to be, it has to follow the proper process. The process to get it on the agenda so that we can hear the motion was not followed.
And I think we were just going, if, as I, as I remember, when I rescinded my vote on a motion in the prior meetings, I submitted one document based on the argument that I was rescinding it.
And let me say that.
And I didn't have to have the three signatures.
Something incorrect one time doesn't make it right. And we have to fix this. This is a trustee that's putting something on the agenda and what's on the, the item is correct. It would just did not get on the agenda the correct way.
Can I also ask for a clarification? Was there a meeting that Ms. Bailey came to and gave the format? Are we not in all invited to that meeting? Because I've never been to this meeting before.
Board officers.
Yeah, board officers, yeah.
Again.
Mr. Parliamentarian, I will, I will abide by your ruling if, if this is something that shouldn't be. I mean, all I do is basically delay for another month, which is fine with me, I mean.
That's okay, let me be clear about the argument that's being made. The argument is that proper process wasn't followed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and the reason for the failure or, or the basis for the argument that proper process wasn't followed is, could you restate that again?
That a trustee is bringing a motion forward. In order to bring something to the board, you need to put it on a board agenda and you need to have proper signature. The content is correct. Once it's on the proper form, then the trustee can move forward with her motion to rescind her vote. However, it was not presented in the correct form. So if we start doing this, then next month, I want to put something on the board agenda with one signature.
Process should be followed. I mean, let's, let's just be candid about that. And if, if the proper process wasn't followed, then you, you know, you can't establish a precedent or you shouldn't overlook the process.
We can move forward.
Yeah.
But the thing is that if you pull it off of the agenda, then it's not on the agenda.
But that policy is. It shouldn't have made it to the agenda.
So with the, with the understanding, if the chair accepts the objection.
The chair doesn't have a unilateral decision in this. The, the process is that the, the board policy was not followed. The chair doesn't get to make a unilateral decision or whether or not the process was followed or not.
There's a lot of dictatorship.
If we set this precedent, next month, I want to submit a form with my, with just my name on it.
I agree. Darlene, I, I mean, Mr. Roberson, I am agreeing with you. I'm trying to.
Vote on the agenda.
Yeah, let's re, could you please bring the agenda up, consent?
So are we moving to rescind the vote to approve the agenda?
No, Ms. Roberson is objecting to the agenda. So in other words, let's bring it up to vote because if the vote was called, the question is asked.
So how do we proceed forward from the agenda?
That's not going to resolve the problem.
No, it won't.
All I'm saying is the agenda could pass with the removal of item 11A.
Needs to be removed.
But we already voted to pass the agenda as is, so now what do we do?
He didn't follow proper protocol, protocol. All he did was he called for the vote, did not answer the question.
I don't think you have to.
Yes, you do.
Mr. Chairman, can we ask for just a five-minute recess to look into this? Just a five-minute recess?
Please, please.
Yeah, if that's fine, okay. So if.
To amend the agenda to remove item 11 from the agenda and.
Second. I'll save that speed.
No, right, we're removing item 11. We're adopting the agenda with the exception of, we're removing item 11 from the agenda. And are there any problems with the consent agenda? Then we are approving the agenda with the exception of item 11, removing item 11 and the consent agenda, right?
And passing the consent agenda. Yeah, sure. Yep.
Any further questions? Could you please bring it up for vote?
Ms. Trudy, can we maybe change the wording a little bit? I'm just going to read it out loud. Motion to adopt the agenda with removing item 11A and the consent agenda approval. Can, can we, can we kind of like, motion to adopt the agenda with the adoption of the consent agenda approval, but removing item 11A? I just think that'll be a little cleaner. Thank you. Item 11A, thank you, ma'am.
We won't see it, you just have to.
And the agenda is. Onto item 1D, which is a motion to approve the May 19th, 2025 Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes. Do you have a motion?
I assume, but I'd like to reword it, if you don't mind. Unless there's an objection, I'd like to move that we approve items 1D, E, and F, just for expedience.
Any objections?
Say that again with Motley.
To go ahead and, and just approve all the minutes from the meeting, so I, three items, 1D, 1E, and 1F. It's just the approval of the minutes from the different meetings, those three different meetings?
It's a block vote.
Just pass them in a block rather than going through each one? Okay. Do you have a second? All in favor?
Yeah, anybody object? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as written on those three. Thank you very much. Onto item two, special recognitions.
Good evening, everybody. To our Board of Trustees, to Superintendent Huggins and everyone else here in attendance. We're going to start off with recognizing a few more of our Charleston County School District's student athletes who won South Carolina High School League State Championships this spring. First up, we're going to bring in the Academic Magnet High School Boys Soccer Team representatives from that program here. Let them come in first while we read their recognition. The Raptors completed the best season in program history with a dominant 4-0, and in soccer you have to say nil when it's a zero, over Andrew Jackson in the South Carolina High School League 2A State Title Match on May 22nd in Columbia. The Raptors' leading scorer this season, Jaden Daley, had two goals in the match. Academic Magnet finished the year with a 23-1 record, the best winning percentage for a single season in program history. And the 23 runs are also a program record and was tied for second most in the state this year. This is the Raptors' fourth state championship in boys soccer and their first since the 2018 season. Congratulations to head coach Jason Hamel and the Academic Magnet Boys Soccer Team.
Okay, ready? Just look at me for a while, this is a. Perfect, congratulations. We have two more groups, so if you guys are supposed to stay, go make great.
And next up, we'd like to bring in representatives from the Baptist Hill Middle High School's Track and Field Program. The Bobcats won a pair of state championships in the South Carolina High School League 1A State Meet last month. Janiah Flood captured the gold in the girls' 100-meter hurdles with a time of 15.38 seconds, also known as FAST. She was also part of the Bobcats' 4x100 relay state championship team along with Emerald Alfred, Jazira Finley, and Malaya Mitchell. They finished first with a time under 50 seconds, 49.96 seconds. A round of applause for the Baptist Hill Girls Track and Field Program for their state titles this year.
Ms. Huggins, do you want to stand on that? Ready, one, two, three, I'm going to take a few, so just keep filing. Perfect, thank you, congratulations. Congrats. Vincent and Kate.
And that does it for the recognition part for the state champions, for our student athletes. I'm going to turn over now to Vanessa Denny. Vanessa?
Thanks, Andy. Good evening, everybody. Tonight marks a meaningful moment in Charleston County School District's history as we formally recognize the closing chapter of our constituent boards. For years, these boards have been rooted in service, grounded in neighborhoods, attuned to communities, and committed to students. Throughout the decades, members have given time, voice, and presence to families, students, and schools across the county. We thank them for their willingness to step forward as stewards of communities, for hearing concerns, for reviewing transfer requests and hearing discipline cases, and also for considering zoning needs. That work is not always easy and it's often unseen, but it has mattered. While the structure may now be changing, their impact remains. The legacy of the constituent board member's service will be an important part of CCSD history. On behalf of the Charleston County School District, we thank them for their years of partnership and dedication to the young people of this community and we wish the very best for each of them. We'll now call each board to the front of the room to receive plaques, your applause, and to take a photo with the board. Constituent District 1, St. James Santee. Mr. Thomas L. Colleton Jr., Ms. Cynthia Diane Gathers, Mr. Jemand Blake, Mrs. Addie Campbell, Ms. Shirley Mitchell-Collington, Ms. Cheyenne Simpson, and Ms. Marie Snyder-Facine. They were not able to join this evening, but we still wanted to acknowledge their service. Constituent District 2, Mount Pleasant, who's also not able to join this evening, but it's important to acknowledge their service as well, Mr. Michael Laurie, Ms. Summer Dee Udi, Ms. Cindy Boatwright, Mr. Ken Koffler, and Ms. Terry Nichols. Constituent District. Constituent District 3, James Island, Ms. Katie Callaway, Reverend Cynthia Smalls, Dr. George Temple, Ms. Susan McManus, and Mrs. Donna Jenkins.
Ready? One. Three. Perfect. Thank you.
Constituent District 4, Cooper River, Ms. Carla Gadston, Ms. Jametta King, Mr. Joseph Bennett, Reverend Chris Collins, Ms. Edwina Peterson, Ms. Jana Wilson, and Mr. Jesse Williams.
Okay, ready? One, two. Ms. Lieber, can you just move over just like, okay, thank you. Thanks. Congratulations.
Constituent District 9, Johns Island, Reverend Gertie Ford, Dr. Karen Simmons Palmer, Ms. Pat Klein, Mr. William Antonucci, Ms. Jari Green, Ms. Monica Smith, Mr. Anderson Mack.
Seven, five, two. Perfect. Thank you.
Dr. Graham Holmes, who needs no inter- introduction. I'll I'll say that Dr. Graham Holmes just turned 90. And I'd also like to recognize the other members of the Constituent District 20 Downtown Charleston Constituent Board, Mrs. Downing Child, Mrs. Dana Yarborough, Diana Yarborough, I'm so sorry, Mr. Francis Clasby, Mr. Marvin Stewart, Mr. Alex Chapie, Dr. Barbara Graham Holmes, and Mr. Marshall Walker.
Okay, ready? One, two.
This is the sixth one.
Thank you. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
I'd also like to recognize our constituent District 10 West Ashley Board members who were not able to join us tonight, Mr. Rodney Lewis, Mrs. Joy Brown, Reverend Patricia Jones, and Ms. Angela Mundie. Now I'd like to welcome our constituent District 23 St. Paul's constituent board members, Reverend Richmond Truesdale, Mr. Elijah Dent, Reverend Charles Glover, Ms. Blanche Bowens, Ms. Brenda Waring Bowman, Ms. Francinia Nelson, and Ms. Tiffany D. Smalls.
One, two, three. One, two. Perfect. Thank you. Congratulations.
We've got one special presentation.
So we want to genuinely thank each of you for your for your work. Um, we know the constituent board is a long, tedious job where you're working with a lot of community members. And for so long, you've been our arms and our hands and our hearts that reach out to the community and helped us serve kids and families well. So we want to genuinely thank you for that, and we hope your advocacy in our communities will continue and that you'll continue to support the work of the Charleston County School District. And on behalf of your efforts, the Representative Joe Bustos and Wendell Gilliard, members of the House, recognize you with grateful appreciation. We recognize the constituent school boards of Charleston County for their service to the education community since 1967. With the change in state law that eliminates constituent boards in Charleston, we want to recognize the dedication of the community members who have dedicated so much of their time and effort to assist Charleston County schools. Thank you for your hard work and untireless efforts on a job well done. So on behalf of Representatives Bustos and Gilliard, I present this to the constituent boards here tonight. We will proudly display this here in the boardroom as a result and as a symbol of your tireless dedication to children. Let's give them one more round of applause.
Ready? One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
Why she step?
Oh, you know what? What's doing there?
What's that?
I don't know. Oh, you know what? I need to look on my phone. What was my phone phone?
Excellent. We will move on to item.
Oh. Thank you. What about make me get up?
I think we are getting up. So at Pinehurst Elementary, our fifth grade students recently completed a powerful year-long writing project that ended in the unveiling of portraits, Our Untold Stories, a professionally published bilingual poetry book. The project became a platform to share their personal stories, to celebrate their identity, and to strengthen the connections between families and the school community and one another. Ms. Marlene Martinez, a social worker from Pinehurst, represents the larger team that coordinated this great effort. And she and the Pinehurst family wanted to celebrate by presenting each of you with a book this evening. Get a Box of Tissues: I Cried for Days. So Ms. Martinez, we want to thank you for your work, your leadership, and the powerful job that you've done with our children, helping them share their stories with the greater community and with our trustees. So let's give Mrs. Martinez her.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. Okay, now do you want to look like you're reading it? I'm a Watley.
I want to read this one out loud.
Two. Thank you. I got it. I got it. I got it. Makes the dream work.
So thank you, Mr. Grabowski. We'll turn it um back over to you now for public comments.
It's adjourn and read the book.
Onto item three, public comment. We will now move to public comment section of our meeting. According to our policy, we have allotted 30 minutes. Uh, as we have three speakers, they will get their full two minutes tonight. A sign up sheet was provided for the meeting for those wishing to speak. I'd like to call up all three, Anthony Bryan, Sidney Van Bode, and Catherine Valentine.
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 Anthony G. Bryan, President AG Bryan Group, Inc. And I I spoke with one of your great staff members in terms of my concern for the curfew and uh in the school to prison pipeline since constituent boards have been zoned. The question will be what a discipline will be like for many urban enrolled children in in this city. Michael G. Cedos is the Section Chief Records Management Division, Federal Bureau Investigations, Department of Justice, 200 Constitution Drive, Winchester, Virginia, and also the Executive Officer for the United States Attorney, and also Kevin Krebs, Assistant Director. And what I what I do in my work is is I deal with um causation. I I don't really deal a lot with adverse effect. I live within the context of food deserts, uh, dementia deserts, all kinds of deserts I live in, violent deserts, you know, just a mirage, people selling in the mirages. We would hope, as a former BZA member, in public safety and exemptions, that this body begin to have a real engagement with the whole community about these curfews. You have the data to support the fact that many of these young people don't have guardianship necessary to be dealt with with this curfew. For $14 billion, the city of Charleston has consumed in tourism dollars, do they have any money for any program and action for prevention? And and the Department of Justice has for for criminal street gangs, juvenile street gangs, they do have money for that. So we want to make sure that the monies are in place for these young folk who don't have no parent or guardians to protect them from anything. Secondly, I had a property downtown. I sold it to the school, the the James Simmons School, and it was stigmatized. And I brought it up to the to the City of Charleston Police Department, who does not have a robust discussion of public safety or the county of Charleston. We're not against the police department. We just respect the due process for everybody. We're not against police. We respect the due process of God, real, of this country. Respect for African Americans in this in this in this community. Thank you for your time and service.
Good evening. My name is Sidney Van Bullock, and I came tonight to talk about Policy FF, which um is now no longer up for discussion tonight. But as a member of KJAM's School Governance Steering Committee, I would be remiss to not take this moment to acknowledge the fact that we've now, over the course of however many months, spent well over an hour discussing when and how and at what diameter to put this onto agendas. And so um just a reminder that we are still asking for the board to have a certified parliamentarian. Um, I think that would alleviate a lot of this discussion. That being said, you may not know this about me, but my birthday is June 17th, which is um the same day of the Mother Emanuel shooting. And we all have these moments in our life that define our the direction that we take our lives. And 10 years ago, on my birthday, I got a phone call from my father that said that I needed to go home because there was a shooter in Charleston. And I kind of laughed it off. And I was like, Dad, there's always a shooting happening in Charleston. He was like, No, this is different. And it was. And that church is directly across the street from the building that you're sitting in right now. And the city wanted to rename this street the Mother Emanuel Way, and there's a plaque up there or whatever. But because of state law, we can't change the name of the street because it's named after a Confederate soldier. When you're thinking about this policy of renaming of how we're going to name our schools in the future, I want you to keep in mind the fact that the majority of the locations here in Charleston are named after slave owners. So if we're saying that our schools cannot be named after people, but only locations, we are saying that our schools can only be named after slave owners. And so when you bring this back up, I just want you to keep that in the back of your mind, because you have a responsibility to keep systemic racism out of our schools. And you have an opportunity to make a difference here. So I just ask that you really sit on that, pray on it if that's your thing, because you can make a difference here. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Valentine, and I am here to speak about the calendars that are on the agenda. I know that the staff recommendation is for A, and I ask that you take the time to actually look at the lack of consistency of five days in the academic week. I, when I originally was putting the calendar into my agenda, I was like, Oh, this is great. We have a half day on Friday and then a day off on a Monday. And personally, my kids won't go to school on that half day or early release because it's sort of a waste of time. So I was looking at all these nice little opportunities for long weekends. And then I started to look at the actual instructional opportunities that were offered. And it's pretty apparent that there are only like two weeks of five days instruction. And then you go to a four-day week with a half-day dismissal with the following week being a holiday. So you have like two weeks of instruction and then two weeks of four days of instruction. And I know because I've spoken before, but I have four children. So I've, you know, run the gamut of looking at the way they learn and had exposure to many, many teachers. And I know that that is a very frustrating process to have these four-day weeks because there's a lot of time spent in kind of getting geared up in the process of teaching, settling kids. And I just know that the twenty-five, twenty-six is probably set. And I do think that changing that is sort of difficult at this point. But for the twenty-six, twenty-seven, I do think that more discussion needs to be had on actually how many days we're putting in for five days of instruction. Academic rigor needs to be the benchmark that everybody discusses. But when you do these four-day weeks, you lose time and you lose instruction. And I don't, you know, it just needs to be something that needs to be discussed. And I don't hear that discussion as much as the half-days. So, thank you.
That concludes the public comment in the live format. We had two comments online. The topic of the comments was kaleidoscope, or one comment, one comment online topic was kaleidoscope. With that, we will conclude the public comment portion, and we'll move on to item four, which is superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Grabowski. Thank you so much. We have a short superintendent's report tonight. We covered a lot of ground last month that, or a couple of weeks ago at the Committee of the Hall. So we'll get started tonight by highlighting Maggie, our CCSD summer feeding programs.
We know that feeding our students is our number one goal. And because the school year ends, we know that we feed so many students that that need still continues over the summer. So we have found resources through the State Department to still fund feeding students for free, which is the best part about it. And so we want to reach as many students as we can throughout Charleston County.
It is so rewarding that it's effortless to come to work. We're excited. We're happy to come to our jobs because just the little ones that look up and licking their plate are saying, Could you give my mom this recipe? It speaks volumes to let us know that we've got their heart. And so for us, it is just knowing that we had a little part in filling a need in which so many families struggle with now.
Anybody in Charleston County can participate. There's no criteria in that. It's just a matter of you coming to what is called an open site. We're here at Hersi today. Anybody that is in the neighborhood and wants to just come, you know, to the to the front door and say, Can I come in for breakfast? We say, Sure, come on in. And then if you want to come back for a hot lunch, we'll say, Come on back at eleven-thirty. We'll have lunch ready. You can come in. There's a lot of the community centers that come every year. And we have a very seamless pickup drop-off process so that they come for lunch every day. We give them the breakfast for the next morning so they only have to come to us once a day. And that way they have two meals to serve for all of the students.
It takes the kids from what they have become accustomed to during the school year and still bringing that to them in the community where they are. You know, the saying is you've got to meet the need where it is. And I think that's the big thing about this program. It helps us in the community partnering with the school district to meet the need.
When it comes to knowing that you're serving the students and what you're doing is making an impact in their lives, it's just the driving motivation for most of us. And, you know, especially in these schools where the students are still coming through the line, you know, is even better because then we're still seeing them over the summer. But just knowing that when a can bro of hot food goes out the door to a community center, those are still our students. You know, we kind of take ownership on any student that we serve as our own students.
Some child is always hungry, not knowing what goes on behind closed doors. But when your belly is full, your mind works better. You're able to have a better attitude just about life in general. So it's nary and dare to my heart to make sure no child goes hungry and again, live up to the model that they are the heart of our work.
Isn't that wonderful? People are just giving so tirelessly to serve kids even throughout the summer, which is so critically important as kids exit our buildings in May and go for two and a half months without being in school. So on the next slide here, you'll see some numbers from our summer feeding programs. Four sites for early head start, non-congregate bundle meals, twenty-one sites, and a hundred and thirty-seven sites for the seamless summer option. We have served over two thousand six hundred eighty-three breakfast already, three thousand four hundred and forty-one lunches. And the sites vary, as you saw featured there. We have places like Ebenezer AME Church, St. James Presbyterian. At the same time, we're serving kids at the Community Resource Center and McClellanville Voyager Camps. And so we wanted to make sure you are up to date on how we were serving the needs of children and some of our most vulnerable children, particularly over the summer. Now you will go on to the next slide. Also want to make sure you and the public, if you didn't have a chance to tune in to this week's press conference or read your email about the Collegiate Pathways Program, we've launched at two high schools, North Charleston High and RB Stall for the coming year. We have a wonderful new partner in Charleston Southern University who has agreed to offer dual credit opportunities for direct admission to the students at North Charleston High and Stall. It's how we're closing the gap, making children more college and career-ready as they prepare for whatever they want to do next. CSU is also our partner for the work that you heard us launch several months ago, the Advanced Academics Program out at St. John's High School, where we'll offer a combination of honors and AP courses along with the same transferable dual credit to students who applied excitedly to enter that program. And I'm excited to say that we have a full cohort beginning in the fall of freshmen. The eligibility across the board is a three-point-O and the application process, and there are no costs to our students. So again, we're really excited to bring on this new partner in this way. As you know, we already have dual credit opportunities at some other sites across Charleston. And we're really glad to focus in some of our most needy areas to really prioritize improved outcomes for kids. You'll see on the next slide how we believe dual credit benefits children with a higher college enrollment. Students are able to go to college and complete their degree more quickly, sometimes enter into master's degree courses as a result of that. And we believe that as a result of this, and we're tracking it closely, the students are able to earn higher wages once they exit our system. Again, this is a way that students demonstrate their college and career readiness. And you see that over the course of the last school year, three hundred and twelve more students over the course of the last few years have taken dual credit in our system. And so we're grateful for the work that our principals are doing, leading those efforts. Maggie? Also, just a few things tonight, as we as we jump around the board. We've launched our Summer Read to Succeed Camps at Hersi, Goodwin, Pinehurst, all in North Charleston, James Island, which is serving districts three, nine, and twenty-three, and Springfield over in West Ashley. We had a hundred and eighty-two students that were eligible to attend. Primarily, they're receiving intense reading instruction. As you know, Summer Read to Succeed is an effort primarily to get students reading on grade level. We have highly qualified educators who are certified providing this instruction. And we have all lots of new partners, should I say, that have partnered with us to make sure that students are engaged, particularly in summertime, as they continue instruction from the school year. The last thing we'll focus on tonight or highlight for you is another thing that we have going on for kids. Summer Sale, as you know, happens each year. We're really fortunate to be able to continue it as a budget priority for students in grades three through five, serving students from almost all of our elementary schools. Scholarships are provided for students in need. And one in five students are already identified academically gifted and talented. Ms. Simmons' team leads this great work, and we're really proud of the engaging opportunities students are having to think critically to expand their opportunities for rigorous learning throughout the summer. As you know, as we talked a little bit about students, but Ms. Simmons' team also recently completed MTSS training. We'll work next year in three key areas, and one of those will be a data-driven culture. And MTSS, as you know, multi-tiered systems of support, is the way that we do that in our schools, ensuring that students are linked to the resources that they need after making sure we prioritize universal systems for both academics and behavior. I'm proud to say that a hundred percent of our schools participated in this summer's training where they focused on data protocol, analyzing achievement and growth of students, and how to ensure that framework is geared toward improving student outcomes. So again, lots of great things going on with kids in summary this summer. And this last thing highlights work that our teachers are doing. You'll also find at your seats, the first ever bound, we're proud FY twenty-six annual budget that was led by our finance team. We hope you'll take it home for some good nighttime reading. If you haven't already read it, cover to cover, Ms. Roberson. Our chief soul in all of our departments will be getting a copy as well. We're really proud, again, of the great work that Mr. Prentice, Jessica, Kara-Her, and Jennifer Carter led in that office. We also want to thank Ms. Candace White and welcome her to the table tonight, another leader in our finance office. And with that, Mr. Grabowski, I'll turn it over to you for any questions that you or the trustees may have.
Thank you, Ms. Huggins. Do any trustees like to be recognized with any questions for the superintendent? Dr. Temple?
Good to hear all the good things. I'm just wondering, and you don't have to give it to me now, but I'm just wondering, can we have a list of where the sites are where people can go for for the food? I think that would be really helpful.
Yes, yes, it's on it's on our website too, just for the public, Dr. Temple. But we will send it out to make sure that you all have access to it as well, but we certainly will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Roberson?
Thank you, might be able to link directly from the slide to Ms. Roberson, Ms. Dr. Temple, but I'll confirm that right here. Thank you.
Ms. Huggins?
Yes, ma'am.
Your summer, the Summer Read to Succeed Camp, is it over?
I'm going to let Ms. Ms. Simmons, our CAO, talk to you a little bit more about what's going on, Ms. Mrs. Roberson, and the timeline for that. We're in the midst of it now.
Right, we're still in the middle of it. It ends at the end of the month.
So it's fifteen, so two weeks?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to ask a series of questions, and then you could answer. Of the one hundred and eighty-two scholars that were eligible, how many attended?
That's the number that attended. We issued about four hundred and eighty-some-odd good cause exemptions, and we landed on the hundred. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Did you, well, the workers, did they do a pre and post assessment?
Yes.
And for two weeks, what's the targeted academic outcome that you're looking for in those two weeks?
Fifteen, well, fifteen instructional days, but we don't do Fridays. And so the idea, in order to be eligible, those were students who were vulnerable in terms of meeting expectations on SC Ready. So the pre-test and the post-test will gauge a particular cut score. We're aiming at all students being at a particular cut score that will make them then eligible to go to fourth grade. And so that's what the, yes.
So it had some implications on promotion?
Yes, ma'am.
It does now, for sure, Mrs. Roberson. And so we're paying particular attention. And we think this, a smaller setting will hopefully augment the skills that those students didn't get in the regular school year.
Okay. I think that was it with that slide. Ms. Huggins, your slide about the sale?
Yes, ma'am.
What's, do you know offhand the demographics for the GT program?
Ms. Ms. Simmons can probably give you a little more information on that too, Ms. Roberson.
Demographics, say more, say more.
Well, I just looked at this picture that's on the slide. And I'm just wondering the demographics.
Well, truth be told, we have more white scholars who qualify for gifted and talented services than we do minority students. So these are kids who are already identified.
And that that imbalance is because less African-American or Hispanic students are tested or?
Truth be told, again, I think it aligns, it mirrors, it's indicative of the existing achievement gap where you see about a fifty percent spread in terms of proficiency of white scholars compared to their counterparts. And so for the last couple of years, the Gifted and Talented Department has been working on talent development. That's our strategy and approach to ensure that even if a scholar isn't officially identified as gifted and talented, we're giving them the supports, the resources, and pulling them in based on what we determine to be their potential to score higher on SC Ready or on standardized scores, standardized tests, I should say.
We we've been discussing the GT identification in this district for several years. And we've got pilot programs going on in places like Shakora Elementary and other places to identify students because all students, as you know, are tested, right? And so this is also kids who apply to come to this, which skews our demographics a bit as well. So we're conscious of that, but again, noted that we have a gap that we acknowledge and that we're doing our best to close.
And my last question, Mr. Chairman. When you say that a hundred percent of schools participating in the MTSS training, what does that look like? That means that there were teams from each school?
Yes, ma'am. Entire school teams, including principals, assistant principals, their lead teachers and such. And so we thought it was a win that immediately after the school year ended, we provided that, I should say, we, under the leadership of Lisa Allison and her team, in tandem with our Assessment and Evaluation Office, we were able to bring all of those school teams together for a day of learning, analyzing their data, studying data points to plan adequately for the next school year. So we thought that was a successful venture.
And my last comment, shout out to the Nutrition Department. I've seen those little cars, vans around the community. So they, it's hot out there, and they're out there. So please shout out to them. Thank you.
So I think we have, Mrs. Roberson, the breakdown just that quickly of the demographics for GT, just for the public. It looks like fifty-two percent are female, forty-seven percent are male. It looks like ninety-nine percent of GT identified students are English proficient. Ninety-eight percent are general, general ed as well. A majority of those students are not in poverty. Seventy-eight percent of them are white. So just that quickly, we have the demographics, and we'll share them very transparently with the board and any member of the public who wishes to have to have the information. I also want to share that the work this summer with our teachers is still ongoing in regards to math textbook adoption. We just learned today that about eighty percent of our elementary schools, or a little over eighty percent of our teachers in our elementary schools have already had training in the new math curriculum. And nearly two-thirds of all of our middle and high school teachers have had new training in the math curriculum as well. So it's already a busy season, and it's not even the end of July for teachers who there's an, there's this phenomenon that they're off for three months. Well, it's never really been three. Well, it's never really been three months, and they're not really off. They're still working to better themselves as we prepare for students' return. We'll share these demographics with you. Good questions, Mrs. Roberson.
Dr. Temple, do you have a follow-up?
Want to come back, thank you. With the Summer Read to Succeed camp, I was thinking it was a longer period of time than two weeks. So I'm wondering if there were some 400 kids invited, 180 to attend them, wondering, is it because the others couldn't attend this particular session, and we need another session later on in the summer to accommodate whatever times I've known?
A couple of weeks ago, we had a slide that featured the start of camp, and I explained that there is a function, a recourse that families had in terms of good cause exemptions, that a parent can apply to prevent their child from having to go to the summer camp. And those things include items like having an IEP, an Individualized Education Plan. That plan is designed to ensure that kids are meeting their academic goals, and so that qualifies them to not have to attend, as well as being a multilingual learner. And so when we applied the good cause exemptions, that's where the number declined to the tune of about 400 scholars who did not have to attend the program. And so that's how that number occurred, not just because they didn't want to or didn't have to, the state law provides that they don't have to attend.
I just worry about the kids who could use more help in the summer, if we had something else. I understand for this, but I think there's still a need for some other summer programs for kids to help them.
And there are. There are summer programming taking place all across the district at various schools and school communities. This is one of them. This is one of them.
Thank you.
Ms. Bailey?
I have a couple of quick questions. When I looked at Slide four the other night, I was wondering, why are the program offerings for St. John's different from RB Stalls? And you're offering these programs for juniors, seniors at North Charleston High and RB Stall, but you're offering to the freshmen at St. John's. And what determined it?
That's a great question, Ms. Bailey. So at St. John's this year, we rolled out a tiered plan for academics, athletics, and the arts. And one such program at St. John's was to keep kids, which we need to do in all of our home schools, but to keep kids in that feeder pattern, from Angel Oak to Hawt Gap to St. John's. And when we went out and we listened to the community and we engaged with them, they said that one such thing would be an advanced academics program, where kids could leave Hawt Gap and go seamlessly to St. John's. And so earlier in the year, we launched an advanced academics choice program for St. John's, so that kids could apply for entry into the ninth grade. So they'll be on an accelerated academic pathway from the point they're freshmen at St. John's, the cohort, similar to that over at West Ashley High School with the Scholars Academy. And CSU, Charleston Southern, is our partner for that at St. John's. And separate from that is this collegiate pathways program that we announced and launched this week at North Charleston High and RB Stall High, where kids will go on to North Charleston and stall. They'll get English one, English two, and their mathematics courses. And then when they advance into their junior and senior year, they'll be able to take these dual-credit offerings, where we believe they'll be more prepared after their first two years of high school. So the short of the answer is, St. John's is sort of an accelerated pathway, not that North Charleston and RB Stall, you can't move quickly through that, but it's more designed for students in the junior and senior year. And you notice that on the St. John's piece there, that that advanced academics will also include AP programs, honor-level programs, in concert. Again, not that those things don't exist at North Charleston High and RB Stall, it's just a very tailored program at St. John's like it is over at West Ashley High School. Does that make sense? Thank you, good question.
Thank you.
Slieber?
The Read to Succeed. So has there been any attendance challenges with the Read to Succeed?
The data, the trend and the tradition that we've learned over time is students don't come back after Fourth of July. And so the state requires 96 hours. We have a little bit more than that to our program, but the idea was to ensure that the program ran the balance of June and not into July, because we just struggled to get kids back after that holiday.
Good question. The other one is, when this was introduced a few months ago, there was locations that didn't align where the students were. Did you guys readjust? Or, because I know you're down to 182.
What happened is, over time, students fell off in terms of who had good cause exemptions. And so there are some areas, like District Two, where we ended up with no students who qualified for the services. And so we then made adjustments thereafter.
Okay. And I guess my last question is, the word "have to" and then "not provide," are they synonymous? So did...
Are you reading from a slide?
No, I was just in conversation, like, you got to 182 students. Those were the required students. Did the other 400 get the option to come? That's maybe more the question. Or were they not in that list?
Let me frame it this way. We had about 600 who initially would have been eligible to attend. After we applied the good cause exemptions, 480-plus fell off of that list, right? They no longer were required to attend. That ultimately gave us about 180 some odd, almost 200 students who did.
I guess, could they attend? Or was that not within the policy?
It's possible they could attend.
But our history is that students who don't have to attend, don't.
Right.
And what our data also suggests from times that we did offer more camps, Ms. Simmons, is that when we looked at ROI, there wasn't a lot of return on the investment in summer programming for kids. It's a, they typically are great places for kids to be and engage, but when we measured success, there wasn't a significant ROI. And as Ms. Simmons said, we've used past experiences to adjust how we do summer programming, which is why we end this three-week camp before the Fourth of July.
My apologies, two more questions. One of them is, the Read to Succeed, do we have an attribute on the student? So we could say, hey, guys, that program, you know, maybe you needed some help, you know, year blank, whereas right now, we've adjusted it. So do we have anybody that might fall behind? I'm just saying, like, as we look at them in their future, as they grow up, you know, are they able to, are we able to identify them that they were offered that additional resource?
Yes, and then there's follow-up. And so each student who's vulnerable, who's at risk of retention, not meeting grade-level standards, will have a plan, a reading plan, that will follow them for the balance of the upcoming school year. And so we don't just drop them at the door. When summer camp ends, we make sure that school teams have resources and plans to support them moving forward.
And I guess my last question is, do we have any, do we need for community support? Or have you met the needs of the, to help the readers?
Always need community support. The superintendent, when she referenced the slide, talked about some of the community outfits who are currently engaged, but we always seek more and welcome more.
Do you need more now? Should we make a national, a broadcast?
We are always, well, we preach this every day, and I'll say it again this week like I did two weeks ago. It's going to take an ecosystem of support to change the trajectory for kids in this district. Achievement gap didn't happen overnight, didn't happen over a year, it hadn't happened over two years. An achievement gap existed for the 30 years I've been in Charleston, or near 30 years I've been in Charleston. It exists nationwide. We need the community. We need every partner we can get to stand alongside us and to help and to support.
I'll check my calendar.
So we're happy to have whomever, whenever, wherever to help kids. That's what this work's all about.
Thank you, Ms. Huggins.
Ms. McKinnney?
Great questions, Ms. Lieber.
Ms. Watley? Mr. Hollingstead?
Thank you, sir. I'm not, I'm not going to bore you.
You're never a bore, Mr. Hollingstead.
I just wanted to compliment you, and basically, my mind just ran on a couple of things over the years when I was a toddler, young man. And then I can remember my son Kevin Jr. in the school system. They would give him a summer packet to do over the summer to try to make sure he was on task, get back to school. As a parent, you can kind of remember, as a single parent, trying to make sure he had his work done, and my daughter Gabarrelle would assist me because I'd be working. But, but to go back to where you're talking about summer programs, I can remember when I was a young guy, and, you know, another day for another story about how discrimination hit me in Cooper River system. I believe I shared a little bit with you on that, but...
You did, yes, sir.
I went to a summer camp in Atlanta, Georgia. My brother Lawrence was there. And they worked on how to get you to, to work on summer programs of academics, but then allowed the kids to breathe a little bit afterwards. For some reason, they achieved a lot more. We had this discussion here, I think Reverend Brown in the back and the minister, and I see it on my street, and it's not the kids that you have in the summer program, it's the kids that we see out on the street, like we say in the church. You know, the kids in the church are not the problem, the kids are the ones we can't reach, the souls we can't reach are the ones we need to get to. So we got to figure out how, and this is, like you said, this not, this didn't happen overnight. We got to figure out ways to partner with. I was talking with the mayor's office today, they called to check up on me in North Charleston. But we got to find a way to make their camps and their summer programs kind of configure with what we want them to achieve in academic, and maybe try to balance it. Because the kids are going to their summer programs, and they're getting indoctrinated in basketball or football, wherever it may be, and they're kind of following along the regimen of what we want them to learn over the summer. Maybe that's my, by the way, we can kind of introduce it to them a little bit and keep them on track. So that's just my food for thought. But I thank you again for your assistance last Friday, you and Trudy, on helping some kids in the well in the summer basketball program. And that truly was amazing to see the young kids out there, young kids playing basketball. I know Trudy wanted to take me one-on-one, but I didn't dare try to let that happen because I didn't feel like my back being hurt.
Y'all wouldn't go against Trudy either. We appreciate your heart for kids, Mr. Hollingstead, that's for sure.
But you did a great job with that, and I know the families out there, and if you, I sent you the pictures, and you could see...
They're great, yes, sir.
The girls that were out there just enjoying themselves. So again, job well done. Thank you, Trudy, maybe next year.
Well, I think you made several good points here, Mr. Hollingstead, including the need for municipalities. We met with Chief Walker, Mr. Ryan Bog, Mr. Douglas, and I recently, and we talked, this is one of the things that came up. You know, we met about the curfew that one of the public speakers spoke on tonight, but as part of that, we talked about how in the summertime, we might collaborate more, like you suggested, to ensure kids are engaged in ways that we want them to be engaged, so that they can learn and grow and be responsible, young people. So thank you for that. Thanks again for your heart for kids.
Ms. Jewitt?
My only question is with the, the program, the summer...
Yes, ma'am.
Feeding program, are we concerned at all with funding? Or, you know, how are we with...
It's a great question, Ms. Jewitt. Mr. Burrowey?
It's all refunding. We're not taking anything out of hide on the summer programs.
So we're good, Ms. Jewitt? Thank you so much. With that, Mr. Grabowski, unless you have any questions?
I think it's just, I think it's an observation on the dual-credits. So now we have dual-credits offered at all.
Dual-credit, children have the opportunity that, at all of our schools.
At all of our high schools.
The difference is, is this one offers direct admission.
Got it.
Again, we're doing our best to expand access and opportunity and close the gap.
Ms. Bailey, follow-up?
About the free lunch and free breakfast program?
Yes, ma'am.
What are you guys doing to combat waste?
That's it, Mr. Grab, Mr., what's your name, Captain? What are you doing to combat waste?
I'll eat anything the kids won't.
I knew that was coming, Phoebe.
Ma'am, quite honestly, nothing in regards to, once we hand it out, obviously, we're tracking our food costs and the preparation side to make sure we don't lose any on the front end. But after it's handed out, we're not tracking it.
No, I'm talking about, like, if you have food that has not been picked up, what's been left over? I mean, because I, my kids, all six of my kids have been in programs over the summer, and I know there's a lot of waste, though what doesn't go out? I mean, do you give that to a, like, shelter, a community shelter, or what?
We're not permitted to transfer food. We're not permitted to transfer food to any organization that we're not using. We obviously monitor dates, expiration dates very closely, and track in and out to make sure that we're using all of the food that's within its perishable date. And we do, I think we do a fantastic job managing that to minimize the waste, but if it, if it has exceeded the expiration date and we can't use it, it has to be thrown away.
Great question, Ms. Bailey, thank you.
Excellent. Onto item five, the strategic education, student outcomes, item 5A. It's an information item, monitoring report, interim guardrail two, conditions and competencies for learning, and sense of belonging and self-management.
Thank you, Chair Grabowski. We're going to pass it off to Ms. Lisa Allison, who is our executive director of Student Support Services, who'll provide the update for you tonight. Thank you, Ms. Alice.
Thank you, I have a clip. And thank you, board, for the opportunity to report out on guardrail two, which, as you can see, is conditions and competencies for learning. That is measured by two instruments. One is the self-assessment of MTSS, as you heard, outlined by Superintendent Huggins just a moment ago. And then the other is the Panorama Survey, which I was just up here, I feel like just yesterday, talking to you all about, with our staff survey. But this is the student survey, and two topics specifically on the student survey, sense of belonging and self-management. So Maggie? So just, we're going to start with the SAM TFI first. Again, this is a self-assessment. So our MTSS teams, Ms. Roberson, I think it was you that asked about who, or Ms. Lieber asked about who was coming to that MTSS training. So it is that MTSS core team, led by our administrator, of course, and comprised of a multidisciplinary group who can look at data, can analyze data, can do the resource allocation, and really develop student supports, so that every student's need is met in the school building. And so they use this tool as a self-assessment to focus on the activities. You can see the six components of the assessment on the slide here, that will really help sustain a healthy MTSS framework for their school. Teams score themselves on each of these areas, and we would consider a score of 70% or higher on the self-assessment to be an indicator of a healthy MTSS framework or a solid implementation. So we can go to the next slide, and we can look at our different learning communities. So the percentage of schools within each learning community who rated themselves as 70% or higher is what is shown on this slide. These numbers include our alternative and program schools as well. So you can see this spring, we had 89% of our elementary schools, 60% of our middle schools, and 67% of our high school scoring themselves as 70% or higher on the instrument. And when we look in reflection to the guardrail goal that was set for spring of 2027, we can see that elementary schools started high and has kind of stayed at a plateau. We've seen middle schools take a little dip, and we have seen high schools make significant gains across the years.
Ms. Allison, thank you so much. Will you go back a slide, Maggie?
Yes.
Right there? So I just want to make sure that you, one, Maggie, thank you, sis, that you know that this is self-reported, and so it's really important for us, for people to be honest, and that we report the data honestly to you. And so in the coming year, as I suggested earlier, we'll roll out our three priorities, and they are well-aligned, we believe, with the board goals and guardrails. And one of those will be around, as I suggested earlier, when I talked about this in the superintendent's report, one will be a data-driven culture and the importance of this process. Because as a former principal myself, I genuinely believe that no school is great without a high-functioning MTSS team. It's the way we diagnose, ensure universals, set up systems, resource kids, and communicate. And... And, um, this young woman here who just had a birthday, this, this young woman here.
Cow meeting. Not so, yeah.
At the cow meeting is, um, is, I am certain one of the best in the nation to lead this work. So thank you for, let me interject here that these are honest numbers and, and we don't want our principals to report anything but honest results.
Thank you for that Superintendent Huggins. I appreciate that. We have a great team, um, and multidisciplinary team across the district who is helping to support the MTSS framework, um, because every aspect is involved. Um, and I'd also like to thank, um, Buffy Roberts' team for helping us with the data-driven culture that is the root of the MTSS framework. And our associates, because yes, in conversation with them, in conversations with their principals, they do encourage them to be very honest to almost critical in some cases of them, of their teams so that they can have that room to grow, so that they can have that urgency to meet all the students' needs. Um, so that is really reflected here. I will say, um, Maggie, if you go to the next slide, you can see in that little bubble up top that when you look at the average score across the district of these assessments, we're at 79% for the district. So the majority, um, the average score across the entire district is showing a solid implementation of MTSS. So then our work goes to helping support those places where we see, um, performance below 70% by their own ratings. They're asking for help. We need help and support and that's what we're here for. Um, and so only 17 schools fell below the, the 70% mark. That's doable for supporting schools. Um, that is targeted, uh, helpful support in the areas that they request. I would like to take a moment to highlight three schools. Um, we worked with Ms. Roberts and her team to identify a school at an elementary level, a middle school level and a high school level where their MTSS score, their SAM score, self-reported correlated with academic outcomes at a very high level. And so at this moment, I'd like to, um, celebrate James Island Elementary, led by, um, Principal Gregory, C.E. Williams South, led by Principal Smith, um, now to be led by Ms. Flock. I'm sure she will continue that. She had a strong team there, um, a couple of weeks ago. And then Lucy Beckham High School, led by Ms. Anna Dasing. So thank you for that help and that analysis. And we'll continue to do that at a district level to see where the structure, the infrastructure for student supports is tied to those high academic outcomes and, and behavioral outcomes and absenteeism outcomes. So all of those important indicators. Great. We're on strategies. So as, and we can go back, Maggie, sorry. Um, as we look at these bulleted strategies here, you can see that these are district-level strategies. Every school, because they've done the self-assessment, their team is charged with developing their own action plan. So at a district level, we're thinking about what support do we need to give to certain schools? What support are they asking for? How can we help? Um, we're also helping them develop their own plans so that they can build that capacity. So you can see some examples here. I don't necessarily need to read them off to you. I did want to highlight, um, the, a few new things that we're going to do next year. And that's having the opportunity for our MTSS facilitators at schools to go visit other teams. They've asked for that. They want to see a highly functioning team. They want to see how they divvy up the roles and responsibilities, how they, um, communicate with their staff. That is an area of growth for us, making sure that the classroom teacher understands what the MTSS team is doing and is all about. So making that connection, um, with all, so every adult in the building is part of the framework to help students. We have updated some resources. We're always making sure that we're keeping in line with the, um, with the pillars that have been identified and the priorities, um, from the district level. So this is right in line with it because it is definitely data-driven and it's focused on that high-quality, um, leadership and teaching and instruction. And then also professional learning communities to review how students are doing and make changes and course corrections when they're needed. So we can go to the next slide. And we can talk about the other aspect of this guardrail measurement, and that is the Panaman- panorama climate survey. And so I did want to take a moment to acknowledge the fact that in the fall of this year, for the student survey panorama, um, and this was a national effort to calibrate the readability of the questions. I think, Ms. Lieber, you may have brought this up at the cow. Um, you know, sometimes the questions can be difficult to understand. Sometimes students' reading skills are not at the level of the questions. And we want to really make sure we're gauging student, um, perceptions of, for, in this case, so sense of belonging and self-management. So that adjustment was made. That's a good thing. We want kids to be able to respond validly. What it did do was shift some of our scores. And so we were advised to have a new baseline. So it interrupted our guardrail measurement a little bit, but ultimately it's, it's a good thing. And so when you see these scores, um, or this performance from our students tonight, you will notice that there are some adjustments from the original goal that was set for this guardrail. So we'll go to the next slide. Okay, so you will see the spring scores for each of the new baselines and the goals for 2027. And the goals were set very similarly to our guardrail five, which is two percentage points per year, which when you look at national norms, that seems to be doable, reasonable and a good goal for us to, to utilize. So when we look at elementary schools in sense of belonging, you'll see that 70% of our third through fifth graders rated favorable responses in that area. And again, sense of belonging is how much students feel that they are valued members of the school community. And at the middle school level, you'll see 56% of our students, that's grades six through 12, middle high, um, rated favorable responses. In the area of self-management, which is how well students manage their emotions, their thoughts, their behaviors. So really self-regulation, self-management. Um, elementary students, so grades three through five, rated, um, 78% favorable responses. And our middle and high school students were at 73% of favorable responses. So we can go to the next slide and we can look at each topic individually. So this one is sense of belonging for our grades three through five. There was, and remember, there was a new baseline set in the fall of 2024. Okay? That's when that, uh, calibration happened. And so from that score, um, you can see that we did have a 1% increase from the fall assessment. So we're trending in the right direction. And we're also at the 90th percentile nationally on sense of belonging for our elementary students, which is a great thing. When you look at our sense of belonging for our sixth through 12th graders, I really want to take a pause here and that's on the next slide, Maggie. Thank you.
Which slide? Which slide is that one?
Um, this is slide eight, I believe. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So I just want to pause for a moment and celebrate this upward trend for our secondary students in sense of belonging. This is a really important indicator for our teenagers, um, feeling that they are valued, they are seen, they belong where they are. Um, that's important for continued attendance at school and for academic engagement and for overall health and wellness, quite honestly. So we're trending up. This is something that schools have been paying attention to. They've been really devoting energy to, to helping their students feel like they belong where they are. Nationally, we're at the 50th percentile, um, and this is the highest that it's ever been. We can go to the next slide. And this is slide nine and we're on self-management and we're in grades three through five. We also saw an increase from fall to spring. And I would just like to celebrate that because let's think about grades through, three through five and self-management and fall to the spring. And they went up like, that's wonderful. Um, so that they, um, are at the 80th percentile nationally on their ratings of self-management in the spring. Okay, we can conversely go to our teenagers, right, and, and pre-teens. So our sixth through 12th graders, we did see a decline from fall to spring in their self-management ratings. Um, still above the average, so they're at the 60th percentile nationally. And if you look really closely, you can see a trend here. The first data point is spring. So, but if you go beyond that, you look fall to spring, fall to spring, fall to spring, you will see our sixth through 12th graders have a trend of starting strong in the fall with self-management and then having that slight decline in the spring. So it's just something to think about when we put our energy into our, um, middle and high schools around, um, things like paying attention and distractions and staying, um, not procrastinating and things like that. So we can go to the next slide and, um, we did want to give you some specific examples of questions and pull out some questions that were particularly or highly, uh, favorably rated on all of the levels. And we had a lot of consistency across grades three, five and six, 12. So for sense of belonging, um, you can see that they had the same strength. Um, they had the same question that was most favorably rated. And that question was, how much support do the adults at your school give you? So grades three through 12, the highest rated question was how much, how much support do the adults at your school give you? The opportunity was also the same, the opportunity for growth. And that was how much respect do students at your school give you? So you can see there we were, where we're going to focus our, um, attention. And sense of belonging, um, okay, nope, we just did that one. I apologize. Self-management, um, both levels responded favorably to the question and they're all rated during the past two weeks. I should say that. So this is kind of a, a point in time here. During the past two weeks, how often did you pay attention in class? So that was the most favorably. And, um, when it came to the area of opportunity, we found a difference between the two levels with elementary students responding least favorably to how often did you allow others to speak without interrupting? And secondary, I think, I mean, I can relate to this one personally. Um, how often did you get your work done right away instead of waiting until the last minute? Ms. Simmons, just cover your ears there. So we see the trends there and we see areas that schools can focus attention. And that's the purpose of this. Um, it is to help guide what comes next to help support our students. So we can go to the next slide and I just want to let you know, um, you can see here, there's a data protocol. There's a really specific data protocol that we help schools with to look at their school data, to identify those areas of strength and celebration for their students and the areas where they may need extra support. Um, there is a lot within the panorama system that will help schools meet those needs. There is, it's called a playbook, which is lesson plans. Um, and when you look at your results in the panorama site, it goes directly to the playbook activities based on the scores of your students. So it's right there at hand. Of course, we have lots of other, um, tools that we can give schools, but this is one that's right there tied to the survey results. And the way that they can measure, uh, or progress measure change is through panorama check-ins. And so you could look at your results in a school, that's what they do. They look at their results, they're going to assign some activities, whether it be through the playbook or other means. And then they can do check-ins through the panorama platform to see, are we making a difference here? Um, we actually have designed, um, uh, check-ins specific to questions on the panorama survey that are correlated to our state climate survey. And many of our schools are utilizing that feature to gauge how students and staff are doing um, in those areas prior to that high-stake, um, state climate survey. So a lot of good things built into the system and of course, we support around it as well. And you'll see some other things that are very intuitive and supportive of college and career readiness skills, specifically on that self-management side, goal-setting, self-monitoring, um, organizational tools, things like that. And then on the sense of belonging side, very similar to the things we talked about for our staff on guardrail five. Opportunities for voice to be heard, um, opportunities for clubs, ways to find your identity, um, in school. And then also when there are issues, when there is repair that is needed, how do we do that? So thinking about those bully curriculums that we have, um, our opportunities with distorted practices, with circles, um, for proactive relationship building. I believe that is our last slide. And so, um, thank you for your time. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you. Ms. Stewart?
I guess my only question is, um, is there a way for us to kind of see what our district, how our districts are performing separately and where the schools are, just to know, understand kind of where the parameters are.
So within constituent districts, is that what you're asking?
Mm-hmm.
You know, we don't have that set up in the system as an easy report, but we could probably compile that. I believe.
Let us look into it, Ms. Stewart.
We can look into it.
If it's something we can provide, we're happy to do it.
That'd be great.
So in the, we can look obviously by level, elementary, middle, high at this point, but we don't have any other organizational feature in our reporting system at this time, but we'll look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hollingshead? Ms. Wally? Ms. McKenna? Ms. Lieber?
Just a real quick question. I think the listening to others obviously is a trend. I think, um, it'd be nice if we could put the playbook on the website for all of us.
Well, and thank you, Mrs. Lieber publicly for the feedback. You'll notice we added a couple of slides after the SEC meeting last week with Dr. Clamp.
Yes, I, thank you.
And, and to give some examples. So we appreciate that feedback. Thank you.
Ms. Bailey? Ms. Roberson?
No, great reports. Thank you.
Dr. Temple?
Um, thank you very much. Um, I'm just, the only question I have is, um, why were the middle and high schools grouped together for sense of belonging and self-management? Why were they not kept separate?
That's a great question. So there are two separate surveys. One is for grades three through five and one is for grades six through 12.
Can, can you tease out, um, the difference? I mean, middle school kids are unique.
You, you are very correct there.
That way you say a Dr. Temple.
Wonderfully unique.
Indeed.
When you, when you do look at the demographics, when a school can look at their, their student groups, they can actually look by grade as well. Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Temple? I think we've been working together now for about three years and you always manage to not have your microphone. And nobody can online, the people online can't hear you. You definitely are using your teacher voice, but the people online can't hear it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Item B, five B, which is an action item. The question for the board is a motion to approve the recommended mathematics textbook selection update for high school credit-bearing courses of Algebra I and Geometry with Statistics to Accelerated Learning, Math Nation for middle school students. Do you have a motion?
So moved. A second.
Any discussion? Ms. Roberson?
Um, do we get a presentation?
Yep.
Well, in the spirit of transparency, Mrs. Roberson, in the spirit of transparency, we wanted to make sure that the board knew and understood that we want middle school students who have access to high school courses to have the same textbook as their high school peers. So that, so that the kids at Baptist Hill Middle, for example, would have the same honors textbook for algebra or, or geometry with statistics and Algebra I as their peers at Baptist Hill High School. And in the motion you all approved last month, it was a general approval for grade six through eight McGraw-Hill, um, Reveal Math. But again, there will be some seventh and eighth graders who will take geometry and Algebra I. And we wanted to be really transparent and bring it back to the board in good faith. Dr. Clamp, what did I miss?
Yes, ma'am. You didn't miss anything. We want to ensure that the middle school students get access to the same textbook as their high school counterpart in Algebra I and Geometry with Statistics.
And we didn't help the board word its motion that way. And so we just very transparently wanted to bring it back.
Okay, so, process. Normally you come in April because you need to order, get it to the state by April 30th. So we could get books here on time. Where does that put us now?
We can get them here. We can get them here on time. We just needed to be sure we updated that list so that the, uh, State Department knows that our middle school mathematics textbooks are in alignment with our high school mathematics textbooks for the high school credit-bearing course.
We're not concerned. We're in touch with the state. We're not. If we, if, if we get concerned, we'll bring it back to you, but we're not.
You don't have to, now that we are switching it, we don't have to, to put it back out to the public?
No, ma'am, because the textbook was in alignment with the course that was being offered. So as we made our recommendations for the courses for Algebra I and Geometry with Statistics, that book was selected, which is Accelerate Learning for Math, Accelerate Learning, Math Nation. So in the middle school adoption procedure, it identified a grade six through eight textbook, which is, uh, Reveal Math, McGraw-Hill. We wanted to be specific that students in grade six, or specifically grade seven and eight will be taking a credit-bearing course, high school credit-bearing course, Geometry with Statistics or Algebra I. So no, we don't have to carry it back out because we're not changing the list of adopted texts. We're just updating so that middle school students can have access to the same textbook as their high school counterpart.
And to be clear, we already ordered the right textbook for the middle school courses, but realized that the board motion was general in regards to grade six through eight. So that's why we don't have a concern about getting the resources. That's, I appreciate you asking that question.
Any other trustees have any questions regarding the textbooks?
Just, do we need to vote on, we made the motion, are we going to vote on?
I think the only question I have, and I think it goes along with what Ms. Roberson's, you know, bringing up, is that how do we identify how many books we would have needed? You know, I understand you're, you're really just clarifying the motion that was brought to us originally, but it, it seems like we had already taken into account that these middle school students would be, because when, when would they be notifying us that they would be taking the extra course up?
They, they've already notified us, so we have that registration information, and those are the numbers that we would use for ordering.
Got it.
So that's how we knew, and then we were like, we need to take it back to the board just to clarify to the public.
Thank you. I would like to bring it up for a vote.
We are being really cautious, just really cautious.
You're on the side of caution.
And the motion passes on to item 6A. The question before the board is a motion to approve the reallocation of funds as shown on the attached resolution. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not now close and asked to bring it up for vote, please.
Mr. Barori, a question, Mr. Chairman? Can I ask Mr. Barori a question?
Sure.
Mr. Barori, relating to this item, what's the qualifier for emergent HVAC system?
Essentially, anything that is identified that wasn't planned to be replaced, yet needs to be replaced. So it's something we believe has, has exceeded its useful life where we can keep repairing it, and we want to go ahead and replace it. Got, so I was, so which, which project are you referring to on the list?
I'm just wondering, you know, like Baptist Hill's air goes out all the time. You know, is that something that's constantly being repaired, that is emergent? I'm just trying to see.
So I've.
What's the qualifier?
So I've specifically asked Mr. Hamer to track the repairs at Baptist Hill. There are multiple units out there. Much of the system was replaced within the recent past, which wouldn't warrant a replacement. I'll certainly get a, I'll certainly provide before the school year starts a complete update on where we stand with that. I'm not aware of the need to replace any units there right now. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
And the motion passes. I'd like to ask for a motion to convene into executive session to consider and receive legal advice on matters involving proposed contractual arrangements, student placement pending, and potential legal claims or other matters covered by attorney-client privilege.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. We are in executive session, this is going to be a long one. We have over 11 items on it.
Open session.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are in general open session. Onto item 10A, district student transfer request. Question before the board is a motion to take action on the attached student transfer request. Do I have a motion?
Um, the motion is that applicants two through nine meet the criteria for student transfer according to policy J F A B C.
A second.
Are there any trustees not in favor of the motion? All those say in favor say aye.
Aye.
None against, hearing none against, the motion passes. Item 10B.
Um, 10B, the motion is to deny the request.
Do I have a second? Yeah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes.
Wait, but did we vote? I thought we hit two through nine and then we were supposed to vote.
Oh, this was an out of county transfer.
No, I thought it was about A. I thought we divided A into two kind of groups.
Now, that was the district. Remember? Here, I'll show you.
Yeah, I just thought there was one that was an outlier. It was, it was covered in the motion. Okay, sorry. Aye.
I know what you're saying. There was one that was an outlier, yeah. Um, item 10C, which is the out of county transfer request, is there a motion?
A motion to deny the request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Item 10D, so out of county transfer request, do I have a motion?
Motion to deny the request.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Item 10E, it's an out of county chancellor.
Sorry.
Um, 10E, motion to accept the parents' request for the elementary school and middle school students to attend the requested schools with tuition waived and transportation provided.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, the motion passes. Onto item 10F, do I have a motion?
Motion to allow the student to remain enrolled as an out of county resident with um, tuition wa- let me check this. Uh, with tuition and transportation provided.
Wait a minute, by the parent?
This is to, the student resides out of the county with the parent.
That they have to cover the tuition?
Correct.
And transportation, okay.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Item 10G.
The motion is, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, do I have a motion?
The motion is to allow the student to remain enrolled with tuition waived but tr- transportation provided for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Onto item 10H, now to county enrollment request.
Out of county enrollment accepted dependent upon payment of full tuition and transportation provided.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Onto item 10I, foreign exchange student request.
Accept the foreign exchange student to enroll into St. John's High School in um, the 11th grade for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Onto item 10J.
The motion is to, for the student to be referred to the I E P team and placed on board probation for the first nine weeks of the 2025-2026 school year.
Second. Mark.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Onto item 10K, student placement appeal.
The student is referred to the I E P team and placed on board probation for the 2025-2026 school year.
If it's, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. On item 10L, student placement appeal.
The motion is to place the student at Daniel Jenkins Academy um, in the start of the 2025-2026 school year until completion of the program and onboard probation for the entire school year.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. On item to item 10M, dismissal of professional staff designation of hearing officers.
Um, the motion is to approve the reference hearing officers for the 2025-2026 school year.
Do I have a motion? I mean, a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Now onto item 10N, which is the health advisory committee filling of the open vacancies as per the agreed upon um, policy towards the uh, voting on the specific candidates. We will first start with the clergy. Um, and we have two clergy members which are identified as A and B. I would ask that the first member, um, A be brought up for a vote. With the understanding that if the member gets five votes of a majority of vote, then we're only filling one spot. And we have two candidates.
To approve candidate A?
It'd be, yeah, approve candidate A for the clergy position. And the candidate does not get a majority, so we'll go on to um candidate B. Please bring up candidate B for the, for the clergy spot.
Do we have to have a motion and a second for each one of these? So you're making the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, second.
And candidate B does receive majority vote. Onto the medical positions. We have three candidates, candidate A, B, and C. I would ask that you bring up candidate A, or motion to bring up candidate A for vote for the medical spot. Do I have a second?
Second.
And the candidate receives an unanimous vote. We'll go on to candidate B. Do I have a motion to bring up candidate B for selection onto the medical spot?
So moved.
Please bring up candidate B for
Second.
the medical spot.
I, it's tired of thirty. No, these people.
And the candidate does get the majority of the votes, so we have two candidates for the medical spots which have been elected. Um, onto parents, we have two openings and we have four candidates. I'd like a motion to bring up candidate A for vote. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
And the candidate does not receive a majority vote. We'll bring up candidate B. Do I have a motion to bring up candidate B for the parent spot?
So moved. Second.
You said B or D?
B.
B. And the candidate receives the majority, necessary majority to get the position. Um, onto candidate C. Do I have a motion to bring up candidate C for the parent spot on the Health Advisory Committee?
Can I, let's go for clarification. So if, if we have four, do we stop at three if we've gotten two, two candidates, or do we have to go all the way through and see who's got the majority?
First two to get a majority, yeah.
But is that really how that works? Like, we could be unanimously?
But that doesn't mean the others wouldn't get a majority. You'd have to have a runoff.
So we would vote for all four?
You got to vote for all four.
Go down all four, but only two then, but only two.
Yeah.
So we don't stop at three?
Correct.
We spot what it's filled.
If you get two to get the majority, then you have, yeah.
Yeah.
Then we done.
First two to a majority.
But that's not fair to, if your name's alphabetically.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's what happened when.
Then you have a runoff. Wouldn't you? I mean, it's a fair question.
Yeah, let's.
Let's just do it. Let's just do it. It's nine, it's, it's nine thirteen. Let's just do it.
Yeah, let's just do it. Yeah, because it may or may not happen. Let's tackle it, see how it happens, yeah.
All right.
Fair enough.
So we are.
Because I see, I see what you're saying. If you have three, five fours.
Yes.
Right.
Then you need a runoff.
Or I mean, three, four, fives, correct. Then you need a runoff, correct. We can live with that. We can, we can suspend.
Understand what's being.
Let's go, yeah. So let's bring up candidate C.
Mr. Grabowski, are you just discussing this section? Are you talking about doing the vote all over again?
No, 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 just this section.
I'll take it, I'll take it. You can translate.
The candidate doesn't receive the votes, so we'll bring up the last one, candidate D. Can you, do I have a motion to bring up candidate D as the parent?
So moved.
Maybe, maybe not.
Somebody did, somebody voted yes more than two times, maybe.
And the candidate gets it, so we have a full board. Thank you very much, uh, to the board. Um, on to item twelve, other business, the academic calendar. Do I have a motion to adopt calendar A edited to include a reduced number of early release days from seven to four?
Um, I think we need to do the medical A, B, and C. We don't need to do A and B over, but we should do C because we went through every single one, because one might be five, four, one could be six, three.
Still a majority.
Yeah, but it's, it's a majority, the first two majority.
What if um what if C got a higher majority? What if one candidate got a higher majority than the others?
Well, we only had two with majorities.
Yeah. Well, medical, we had three candidates. So for the parents, we need four. We voted through all because with the rationale that um we would look to see the majority, but then also we looked to see what the vote count was. So it's possible on the medic, I don't know what the votes were, because I can't see the numbers.
They were all five, four, five.
That's unprecedented.
Third one could possibly be different.
Well, there's, there was eighteen votes of yes and.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I mean. It's, it's my understanding, on a vote like this, it's the first to a majority, because if you think about it, if you went another vote and you had six, three, then you would have three majorities.
But the problem is.
It's the policy.
The problem is, what if your name was the third one?
Right.
It, it's unfair to the candidate who's just randomly below.
We only have two positions to fill.
Right, but their name was randomly below the other one, not necessarily.
Both positions got filled with majority vote, so.
Yeah, but that doesn't.
The majority could be higher for another person.
Yeah, we, we've got total of eighteen yes votes.
Can we just?
And we only use ten, so we have eight more left.
Is this really a good use of time to sit here and debate this?
It is. If, if it were you, you would want it.
No, because it, this is unprecedented. What you're talking about is unprecedented. It doesn't even follow Robert's rules. It doesn't follow policy.
It, it, it's my understanding from Robert's rule and reading that when you've got a vote like this.
We have the parliamentarian rule on this. I mean, because we've, with the medical, we didn't vote on all three, so the, the chances are it could likely be different, but in appearance, we voted on all four.
So you're asking for a point of order to the parliamentarian. Yeah, that's fair enough, Dr. Temple.
So, it seems to me that the principle consideration is however you do it, that you, that you do it consistently.
Thank you.
From one category to the other. And, and if you're consistent with how you do it, then I think that's sort of your guiding principle. You can, you can set the rules so long as you're consistent in how you, in how you handle the voting.
Every assistant did something with the medical category that we did differently from the parent category.
We had to vote four times to get a majority for the parent is the only difference. But I don't disagree with what you're saying. I'm just saying that's why we voted on four, because we didn't get a majority until we got to the last nominee.
Every single thing we vote on, be it leadership, any other appointments, it's always the first that gets to the majority. That's the one that goes.
And I think I was pretty clear in explaining that, yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
Towards every member.
Yeah.
But it is possible.
Well, if, if your rule, the principle that you've been operating on is first to get to a majority, so long as you're consistent in operating that way, you should be okay.
Right, which is what I stated when we started this very clearly.
The person who would have gotten the most votes could be the last person, which would mean we'd want the last person first. I mean, like, that would, there's a potential.
That's not the way you set the rule.
It's not the way we set it for this one.
Yeah.
And I, I think so what, because the, the reason is, is Watley's correct. On all of our votings, on prior votings, when we've had a situation where the first name that gets the majority.
Not just here, but any governing body.
But I'm not saying, in, in the future, Dr. Temple, we just need to clarify that before we started voting. But tonight, I was very clear in stating the first person to the majority got the votes, and so I think we followed the policy pretty correctly all the way down. But I understand anyway.
Can we, can we make a motion to actually clarify those rules now with a vo- vote, vote, voice vote?
I, I think it's pointless to, to try to, to make a rule. I mean, you're done with the voting.
Right. Um. We filled the board.
So um, the next time this issue or this vote need to vote arises, you can set a different rule at that point, yeah. Um, but I don't, I don't see any point in setting on a different rule at this time.
Is that something we do through policy?
I'm sorry.
Is that something?
No, we could have done it tonight, but, but we should have stated it.
It's kind of like two, well.
Yeah, we should have stated it, right.
But you can't, if, if you can do it through policy, you won't have to do it.
But we've already, yeah.
No, no, I'm just saying.
For future.
You explain it.
Right.
Right.
So, so we should have said something there.
Right, correct.
And now we're after the fact. I'm saying for further, for going.
For further, going further, I agree with you.
We can create a policy that deals with this, so we won't have to go through.
Yeah, but then now we see that this didn't work.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It has consequences.
But we need to write something so we don't have to deal with this again.
It's like rolling the dice until you finally get the result that you want.
No.
Yeah.
Let's go on to other business, the academic calendar. Um, the question before the board is a motion to adapt calendar A edited to include a reduced number of early release days from seven to four. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I will open up the floor for discussion. Is there any of the trustees that has an opinion against the motion and would like to be recognized?
I do. Mr. Chairman, might I suggest that the um, the, the staff has worked on this matter, particularly in regards to, to calendar A, and we are um looking to change in September, as I shared with trustees over the weekend, um, the early release date, and if you, well, give me one second, I'll pull that up um for consideration in, in the motion that the board so chooses. Ms. Jewitt, do you?
Mrs. Huggins, is, is this an amendment? Are you asking us to amend what is being presented, or are you explaining what we're looking at?
We are, we're, we're explaining, you would, we would suggest that the board amend its motion regarding calendar A to include a shift in early release, release day in September. And Ms. Jewitt, I don't have my email up, I'm sorry, my email, my whole computer just restarted like some of yours does just moment, a few minutes ago.
It's moving to September fourth rather than September eighteenth, so that we can have three consecutive weeks of full instruction time.
Is this the twenty-sixth, twenty-seven calendar?
So, yes, this would be the twenty-sixth, twenty-seven calendar, and we've gotten feedback from the calendar committee that they're open to shift the early release day from September eighteenth to September fourth to allow for more consecutive weeks. Um, keeping the proposal for progress reports, though, that week of September twenty-first to give four to four and a half weeks of instruction. So calendar A, shifting the early release day from September eighteenth to September fourth.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a friendly amendment. I'd like to um include the language that the superintendent just used, changing those dates from September eighteenth to September fourth.
Point, point of order. So, just, or clarification, so if we, if we want, if calendar A goes forward and that we want to accept this, I, I kind of think like, as an example, I'm going to say no on calendar A to go back to Cal. But if I am outvoted, then I would prefer the amended motion. So, does that mean like, the, the vote has to happen first before the amendment can go through?
No, I'm making a friendly amendment. He can accept it or deny it. And then we vote on it.
Can we bring it up if that gets denied? Can we bring up the motion?
We'll just vote on it and then we'll move forward from there. Right now, we're.
So, so we're clear what happened. The motion was brought up, it was seconded. I was opening the floor for discussion. There hasn't been any discussion, and now we have a motion to amend.
A request for a friendly amendment.
Request to amend, which, if we have a second, I'll open the floor up for discussion.
No, 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 you don't say that, you, you accept it or not?
Motion, yeah, I'll accept it.
Okay, Mr. Kenny.
And if that motion, if it's accepted, and we have the discussion and we vote on it and it's approved, we're done.
Mr. Kenny has accepted it.
And if it fails, then we go back to the original motion. We're good?
Yeah.
Yes, it's been accepted.
Accepted. I opened the floor up for discussion. Does anyone on this trustee have any, any of the trustees have anything against this motion?
I do. Get my glasses on before you start, so I can see what I'm writing. Get my glasses on before you start, so I can see what I'm writing. I'm going to be voting no for this calendar to move forward or to be approved. As public officials, we are beholden to FOIA laws, which require us to debate and deliberate in public. That means this dais is not for pomp and circum- circumstance. It is for real transparent discussions. If discussions have been orchestrated behind scenes and simply performed here, we are violating both the spirit and letter of the law. And failing the people we serve. We are not a democracy. We are a representative republic. And our charge is to invest our time to make thoughtful decisions best suited for our students, parents, staff, and taxpayers. Beginning a school year with minimal disruption is essential for our students and families. A consistent uninterrupted, uninterrupted five-day school week. Especially during those first critical weeks, set the tone for strong attendance habits and academic focus. In the low country, we also recognize the frequent disruption, disruption hurricanes bring in September. This makes it even more important to preserve stability where it can, can be controlled through our school calendar. That brings me to the recent vote at the Cal on the school calendar that was misleading and incorrect information was during discussed. Amongst a number of errors within what was presented. Trust, trustees were told that the twenty-twenty, twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar had a legal urgency. To approve Calendar A a whole year in advance. That urgency was never clearly justified, and worse, trustees were discouraged from making changes because. Of what had been voted for in the majority, even though staffs had made that already. We were also told that early dismissals were necessary for teachers before progress reports. However, this was not standard practice in the presented calendars. Not even for report cards, which was more demanding. Even comments about duration before progress reports were not consistent. It is our job to put students first. Not to protect an undetermined agenda. We owe the families honesty, and we owe our community a pro- process that serves learning, not convenience. Go ahead, finish. As a trustee, we have some serious decisions about the twenty-twenty-seven academic calendar, and I have some questions. With only three percent of roughly thirty thousand out of one hundred thousand parents responded to the survey. Is that survey statistically significant enough to consider it as a successful measure to public consensus? I hear my trustees deferring to the survey results. Who has taken a deep dive in this calendar and fully understands this? Who will respond for creating a policy that relinquishes our vote in favor of a constituent service, survey? We, are we truly prepared to forfeit, forfeit our role entirely? I will submit to you that we should establish a stronger academic policy that reflects academic rigor. Is that not our job? We have voted on Calendar A with one three-week consistent instruction versus Calendar B had three, three weeks. And one four-week consistent instruction. Calendar C had three, three-week consistent instruction. The analysis of this matter is complex. We, have we truly unpacked it? What percentage of the population's input should be considered sufficient to override our informed understanding of the calendar? Should we make our decision solely on a survey and ignore discussions with parents, teachers, email, and Facebook posts? Can we assess the survey conducted during the timeline that allows for meaningful input and, and the format of the survey administered? Produce significant results? Can we assess how much time the public spent reviewing and analyzing the calendar before responding? Can we assess that the public forum with discussion and debate might have provided better results? Whose voice should carry more weight? Parents, teachers, and academic experts focused on student success. Using evidence-based case in this decision, and I will be voting no for this calendar. Oh, and I have one more thing.
I'm sorry, Ms. Lever, we need to move on, and I gave you double the time. Are there any others? Trustees that are against the motion?
I yield my time so that Ms. Lieber can finish.
Fair enough, finish.
So, because, um, I appreciate Ms. Jewett's detailed analysis, the first in the Cal. And bringing to light some of the very major concerns with the calendar, I want to point out some things. So I did a heat map. So as, green means great, yellow means moderate, and red means no-go. And if you look at it, so again, the full week of instruction. Calendar A had twenty-two full week instructions. Calendar B had twenty-four. And Calendar C, my apologies, there was some questions that were outstanding that, um, Ms. Denny already responded to, but I don't know how many. Answers were changed. Consistent instruction, again, Calendar A was one, three-week consistent. Calendar B was three, three-week consistent. Calendar B also included a one, four-week, and Calendar C included three, three weeks. We're recognizing the early, um, the half day or the early release before a progress report or a, uh, report. There was two out of eight for Calendar A, three out of eight for Calendar B, one out of eight for Calendar C. And then also in recognition that the end of the quarter to be aligned with breaks is more academic rigor. Calendar A did not do this. Calendar B, kind of. Calendar C, no. And then the best her, um, condition for hurricane, um, was Calendar C. Although in, in, with the changes that were provided, it's possible that Calendar A might have also been included in that. So there's a whole lot of, um, analysis, and I would submit to you that. This is thorough, and thank you to Ms. Jewett for actually highlighting a deep dive in this calendar discussion. And I'd like you to go back to the Cal.
Are there any other trustees that have any opinions against the motion? Are there any trustees that would like to speak in favor of the motion? If not, I will say, um, South Carolina Code of Laws fifty-nine, one, three, five, oh confirms that the board members are public officials and empowered to vote on such matters. As calendar adoption, BID revised oh-six, oh-five, two-five-one. While there's no single statute providing how the district calendars develop, the law firms, the local school boards hold final authority on such matters. Under the general powers of trustees. CCSC Policy IC mandates that the superintendent proposes the school calendar ensures compliance with the state laws. It emphasizes that the board's role is to adopt the proposed council, not to micromanage the process. Reflecting the legal principles, the board members should not take on administrative functions. Board members' roles, not administrative, according to Policy BID, board members are to exercise oversight and vote. But are not to be involved themselves in the operation administration. This whole process is on the website of how the calendar is put out for parents. And it clearly lays out how you can become involved in this, and I highly recommend it. I have had discussions. With Ms. Lieber in next year, actually proposing that we set a firm date on spring breaks. But I would, would hold back and be part of that policy with the committees that the staff establishes. And be, and I would recommend that other members get involved so that, you know, we're not trying to rule on something from here, from this position at this point. And I stand in favor of the motion based upon staff's recommendation and the friendly moment amendment by Ms. Watley. Any other further discussion?
I don't have a discussion. I'm really tired, but I do want to say.
Ms. Roberson.
Thank you, um, Ms. Chairman. For me, as I said at the Cal, I make my decision based on, um, what my constituents. Selected during the calendar process, and I stand, um, with that. I do appreciate, um, Ms. Jewett, um, trustee Jewett and trustee, um, Lieber's due diligence in the process. And as I said at the Cal, I believe that, um, we are all, we should always be open to, um, looking. At how we are going to move forward with the process. Um, I don't want anyone to think that the work that you've done, because you've done a lot of work, um, particularly this way. Um, I don't, I only have a grandpappy, so, um, I, I respect your position as the two trustees with students, um, in CCSD schools. And so I would, um, respectfully request that the staff work with these, at least these two trustees that have students in schools. To get their opinion on the front end, um, because they are passionate about this, and they have done a lot of work. And I do support Calendar A.
And I ditto, Ms. Roberson. We're a little late in the game right now, but maybe work with them on the front end next year.
So Ms. Jewett and I have talked about that at length, and we're happy to invite, especially as we think about the general considerations that we make. How many weeks you want to ensure, or in a month or two, as we frame that out, to listen to some of those initial conversations. We're very open to having, uh, input in that regard. I want to thank, um, them for working with us. And Ms. Jewett, um, notably today at length and over the weekend, so, um, we fully support the amendment and are thrilled to be at this point. And I'll thank Ms. Denny and her team for their work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Temple.
Yeah, I just want to, um, say that a lot of work and thought has gone into this. I think it will be very helpful for this board to, um, have a conversation where we set standards. Around which we develop the calendar, because I think we've seen, I, I think we're in a period of time now where we're changing. There was a period of time where we needed a lot of early release dates and a lot of professional development days. But our, with this, with our higher teacher pay, we're seeing more stability. So when you have stability in your, um, in your staffing. What you train people on one year carries over to the next, so it, we're seeing some shifts here. And I think, um, it will be very helpful for us to set some standards around building the calendar. So that when, um, Ms. Denny has a committee of people looking at it, they also know where we're coming from. So I, I will support this amendment.
Any further discussion?
Just want to, um.
Mr. Honigsey.
Thank you. Want to commend, uh, Ms. Jewett and Ms. Lieber. I, I, I think that as this board grows stronger, as time goes on, um, every board is different. Everybody brings a unique, different skills and skill talents to the table. And I think our staff needs to adjust. We need to make it more inviting for those who have special interests or concerns being at their parents. So therefore, as we move forward, um, opening the dialogue to be able to talk with them, as I just talked to, um, Superintendent Huggins over the weekend. Helps. Being able to close the door and not being able to hear creates more problems. So I think, um, we hear each other today. Um, I support the amendment. But I also think that we, we, we need to start early, as Mrs. Robinson Dumire said earlier. It's better to get ahead of it and make sure everybody's a part of it, than to make sure that we come at a late date. And then we have this debate that we're having right now.
Any further questions, discussion? Uh, we'll close the floor for debate and ask that you please bring up the motion for vote. And this is the amended motion.
I need all the dates in the motion?
They weren't in the original motion from Cal. They, they were, it was just.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just don't want us to get in trouble for you, because that's what's printed on our agenda.
It was, that was, I checked it. That's why it changed. Then you expected it, because that was how simple it was in the.
That was part of the problem.
And the motion passes on to item twelve B. The question before the board is a motion to approve the reduced number of early release days in the already approved, published twenty-twenty-five academic calendar. From seven to four, changing August twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five to a full day. January sixteenth, twenty-twenty-six to a full day, and May first, twenty-twenty-six to a full day. Do I have a second?
Second. Mr. Groubowski, might, might we also, staffs have a little more time to look at this. Um, in consideration of teacher planning between spring break and the end of the year. We would ask the board to consider, instead of May first as a full day, May, excuse me, March sixth as a full day.
So Ms. Huggins, you're saying in the wording of the motion, the very last portion.
Yes, ma'am.
And May first, instead of it saying in May first, say March sixth.
Yes, ma'am. This is something else that Ms. Jewett and I discussed, um, today. So instead of May first, March sixth, in consideration of the feedback from families.
To have a friendly motion?
I, I, Mr. Groubowski, I'd like to make a friendly in motion, uh, amendment rather to the motion.
Second.
May first to March sixth.
I'd also like to consist.
Yes, ma'am. It's the, it is currently an early release day, Dr. Temple, May first. It would stay an early release, and we'd replace that with March the sixth.
And then, uh, I would also suggest that we can, we be consistent with what we're doing with twenty-six, twenty-seven. And originally, we were removing, um. The, sorry, I was on the wrong calendar. We were removing August twenty-ninth half day. And leaving the twelfth half day, which leaves two consecutive condensed weeks. Instead, leaving the twenty-ninth as a half day and removing the twelfth and making that a full day. That would give a four-week period of academic. Five, five-day academic, um. Calendar. So currently, the, currently the motion is saying that August twenty-ninth would be changed to a full day. August twenty-ninth would stay as a half day. And then September twelfth would be a full day of school. That would mean that.
Sorry, this is.
We would have fo- four weeks. It's also very late in the year to be making these changes. This calendar year is happening in two months. You are making changes that are going to affect parents, teachers, and kids in two months.
Ms. Jewett, let me make sure I understand.
The motion is to. Change August twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five. To a full day.
Full day, ah.
No, to a full school day.
That's what's printed out as twenty-ninth. That's what it says.
Right, I'm saying not to change August twenty-ninth. August twenty-ninth was already a partial day, according to the current calendar.
Did you have time to review that, Ms. Huggins?
Ms. Jewett, if you'd give us just one moment, if you don't mind.
But the thing is. I trust me, I agree. I couldn't agree with you more, because we get too tired.
So then at, no. So then, Mr. Chairman, if, um, we would certainly be open to that.
Ms. Ms. Huggins, I'm trying to figure out where we are, because we had the original motion. And we have a motion on the floor to support what the district has said, and we have a second. So, no, we, Ms. Jewett still has the opportunity, because we. Right, you're, you're asking for another amendment.
For this to be part of that amendment.
Because we're gonna have to. I think that's what's happened, you know? I think that's what's happened, you know?
All material.
No, you had, you had an original motion and then you had a proposed amendment.
Right.
And that amendment, it seems to me, should be voted up or down.
Right.
And then if, if it fails, then you can have another amendment.
Another amendment, right.
Yeah.
Correct. So we need to vote on the first motion.
Yes, First Amendment.
First Amendment.
First amendment, correct. Yeah, you, you need to bring the First Amendment up for vote.
Everyone should be clear about that First Amendment.
Right, correct.
Yeah, you have to vote.
First amendment was to change the May 4th to March 6th.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. Changing the full day from May 1st to March 6th, which was according to the superintendent's recommendation. Right.
Then you have to, you have to vote on the amendment first. Then it fails, then you go back to motion sheet and then the second.
I was cold. Because theoretically, what that was, was a discussion on the First Amendment.
Basically, the reason for this was so that.
Basically happened was that we had a motion.
Between.
Had an amendment.
The way that.
Discussion on that motion.
Teachers have no.
Discussing.
Times between spring break and last day of school. When they try to.
Have to vote for this motion.
So put the May 1st one back.
I haven't heard that recommendation.
Oh, teachers are going to, if they, yes, at least a half day to plan. But that's what I'm saying, like, I haven't heard from the teachers. They don't know about it. It's in the middle of the summer and we're changing next year.
And the motion passes.
Oh, you're saying these changes do that.
We've already done the consent agenda items.
But you have, you have one more.
That was the amendment. Now we got to vote.
Now you got to vote, Ms.
No, that's it.
What happened? Did it pass?
No.
Yeah, it passed.
That's it.
The multiple parent.
Motion passed. That amendment passed on.
So now we move to the next.
It's done.
We're done with the calendar.
Well, I.
The staff would be willing to, to, to also supplement the August 29th with the September 18th date, but you'd have to reconsider, I think.
I'm, Ms. Huggins, I appreciate that. Personally, I'm not willing to do that this late in the game. It's very late. We're, we're not going to make good decisions in this.
This is a board matter, so I certainly would defer to, to you all. We, we could, we could change the, the August 29th to September 18th, like we changed the May 1st to March 6th.
We, we. And, and we just did the same thing with 26, 27. That's the, it's the exact same change, except actually this, this partial day.
So it's my understanding of the parliamentarian rules that what it would take is a motion for reconsideration. Because we, you can do that in the same, this is the same board meeting. You can do that.
Again, this is.
And it would have to take a super majority.
Is this a different motion from the one that you just passed?
You just.
She's trying to amend the amendment we just passed.
Yeah.
Well, the amendment passed.
The amendment passed. It should be done.
Because you said that, that we would have another opportunity to make another amendment.
If, if that First Amendment failed, it failed.
If it failed.
Again, this is about student outcome. This is about having the best opportunity for our students. This gives four consecutive full weeks of school for the kids. Everything that Michelle just said to you is important. And you're, you're voting to take away a half day and then have two partial weeks of school back to back. I don't know if you understand how much this disrupts school, disrupts kids, and disrupts parents.
Ms. Jewett, I, I, I understand. But the rule was, there was a motion and then there was an amendment to the motion and the amendment to the motion passed by a majority vote.
Point of clarification, the parliamentarian, can you pull up how many times you can amend? Because our chairman is saying you can only amend it once, but she had a.
Would have to rescind my vote then, right?
Yeah, but you got.
If the amendment has passed by majority vote, what it would require now is for someone on the winning side
I did.
To make a motion to reconsider what you just passed.
But let me clarify, that wasn't my question, understanding what a rescind does. But the fact is, we were, there was a misunderstanding of how many times you can amend an original motion.
No, there was no misunderstanding about that.
Where is it? Can you show me where you can only amend a motion once and not twice? Because that's what Ms. Jewett was suggesting, where there was a second amendment. She was doing a.
That's actually what your recommendation was.
No, no, you can't, you can't have multiple amendments to be voted on at the same time, if that's your, if that's what you're saying.
Have to vote on one and then we have to vote on the second one.
It won't fail.
No, you, you vote on one. If that passes, if you want something different than what you voted on. You have to make the motion to reconsider. Someone on the winning side has to make a motion to reconsider.
I didn't understand what he said.
All right, hold up, question, first, one other question. Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead. She's correct. She was on the right side.
So, Ms. Huggins. Is August too late to make the, the second slate of changes?
The staff would be open to.
Hold up, y'all, just chill.
The staff would be open to the following dates, September 18th, January 16th, and March 6th at the request of Mrs. Jewett.
So, so if we do that at the August meeting, is that too late?
Yes, you need to make a motion to reconsider the motion.
We need to make a motion to reconsider now. Okay.
Resent.
Resent.
And she was in the majority. She has the right to make a motion.
Sorry, no, no, no.
Yeah, you, you really don't need to, to rescind. Or you, someone in the majority just needs to make a motion to reconsider what you just passed.
I would like to make a motion to reconsider what was just passed.
I second it.
Okay.
And then a majority would have to vote nay in order to change the, the, in order to amend the dates in there again. So a majority would have to vote nay in order to amend the dates to September 18th, January 16th, and March the 6th.
You're talking about two votes.
No, no. It just makes the change into one change.
Get the first vote on the motion for reconsideration.
We vote nay, make everything you want in the next motion.
No, first you got to vote on the motion for reconsideration.
That's right. And if that passes, then.
Is that majority or two thirds for reconsider?
Right.
Which is it?
For, for reconsideration, I think it's a simple majority.
Simple majority.
See, then the majority has to vote yay to reconsider then, right, Mr. Johnson? You have to vote yay, a majority has to vote yay for the reconsideration then.
And if that passes, then you offer.
A new motion.
A new motion.
Correct.
That takes into consideration what.
That's correct.
So you're fine with this, right? You're fine.
The staff, the staff is fine with September 18th, January 16th, March 6th, if the board majority votes yay to reconsider the motion and include those dates.
Okay, Ms. Jewett.
I've shut my computer down. I'll be voice, voice voting. And I, yes, yay.
I think so.
You better make sure.
I mean, if Leah hadn't hurried us through, then it would have just all been changed at the same time.
You're getting sad with the girls. You, you're right, Ms. Jewett. Yeah, that's kind of funny.
Ms. Lieber is voting by.
Voice, yeah, she's got it.
Let's stay till 12.
Then you can't get out, Kevin.
It's past my bedtime.
Get out if you stay here.
My bedtime was at nine, so I can't get out.
You can't get out if you stay at 12.
I've been up since four, so.
I get up at four.
And the motion for reconsideration passes, we will now entertain a motion.
The dates are September 18th, January 16th, and March the 6th.
Cool.
Thank you.
And just so for clarification, to pass this motion, you need to vote yay, not a.
If you're in favor of the.
You're in favor of this motion, right.
You need those three days becoming full days from the early release days that they currently are.
And you're fine.
Full school days.
Make sure, and you're fine with that. And you're fine with that.
The staff is fine with September 18th, January 16th, and March 6th.
Got to make it no drama. Let's go, Ms. Jewett.
No further discussion. Close, please, bring it up for both.
I made the motion.
I second it. And I vote, voice vote yay. They vote, both voice.
I think we have the wrong dates.
It's the 12th.
Oh, God.
I'm sorry. It's the, no, it's September the 12th. That's my, that's my fault.
Well, we just vote nay and we have another motion.
Oh, she can.
Can you update it?
I haven't read, I haven't read the, I have not read the results of the motion, so you can bring it up for revote, okay? Just make the addend, make the changes while not announcing the vote, okay?
I would like the new dates.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. September 12th.
Yeah, and bring it up for.
January 16th, March 6th. Ooh, too many colors up here on this calendar.
It's been hard.
I'll make that motion. Yes.
Right, please. Yeah, we'll be both. In other words, what happens, since I didn't announce the vote, we can redo, we can amend it. Go home. Find them time, I'll be waking up.
Go stay. Don't go stay. Y'all, two of y'all can go dance. Y'all won.
So, Mr. Robowski, if, if I might just very briefly state that I, I listened to the comments from the board and the staff is very open to working with, with, with trustees. So the, a position that the staff needs to change, I just want to, for the record, state that I'm very proud of the staff and the work that staff does with the board. We have one-on-ones, we're available nearly 24/7, most of us. We schedule times to sit down and within reason, we do all we can to work with the board. And I'm, for the record, I want to state that insinuations that the staff doesn't do that by any trustee is a bit counterproductive. So I want to thank the, the staff publicly for their work with the board.
And absolutely, and being flexible tonight is far and beyond. But next year, I, I would ask all trustees to please get involved in the process because it's so clearly stated on the information page for all parents and all staff. And, and we should because I think there are a lot of issues that have been brought up that need to be addressed in the future, anyway.
I want to thank Ms. Denny. It's time to go. We're all tired. And hence my inability to read numbers associated with the colors on the calendar. But I want to thank Ms. Denny and the calendar committee because they did a lion's share of work for several months. Yes, and a failure for mine to do so would be a lack of leadership on my part.
Upcoming meetings, July 28th, we have a special call board of trustees meeting on Fun Fun. August 6th is the next audit in finance, August 11th, committee of the whole with the August. Guys shut me off. Do I have a motion to be adjourned? We are adjourned.